This map says green is current public area.
It is.
So, in me looking at, you know, I'm looking at me and saying, hmm, wait a minute. Okay, so the proposal will be everybody commercial can go all the way.
Nope.
Can go from here. Right. Twenty-one over.
Yeah.
You never know.
Literally.
Does it put the hat on?
You know.
Like, any of the commercial.
Family.
Okay.
The hat comes down.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting Monday, November 18th, 2024. The Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on local cable channel eight and 1072. Stream live on the town of Mashpee website, mashbma.gov/number8. It is 6:30 and we're in open session. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's born, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Discussion and approval of the following Monday, October 7th, 2024, October 21st, 2024, regular session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Appointments and hearing, the public hearing that was continued from September 9th, 2024. Chris Havis.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Wayne has an updated map that he's handing out.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I thought that map and the letter from the Division of Marine Fisheries was included in your packet for tonight.
Thank you.
I think you'll see from the map, we, or I had the Division of Marine Fisheries come down and do a bottom survey. They actually dove the entire area in question. I can say that, like I said, I can put this in for the record, but they dove back on November 7th. I was out there actually with them. There was seven divers. They dove from the entire area in question. So the new map, as you see, is the pink area. So they transected that entire area and they came up with, the Cohogs were spread ubiquitously throughout the site with the majority observed being large, chowder-sized, over four inches, with a minor amount of smaller-sized individuals. At that point, the density is 1.7 Cohogs per quadrant dug, which is a square foot. So what I can tell you is that that's absolutely loaded with chowders and they're covering the bottom.
Okay.
So it's my recommendation that we open the area in question to all shellfishers, and that would include family as well as commercial to turn that area over until I see fit that the area's been sufficient enough where we can go back, revert, and we'll be able to plant effectively in those areas.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Set it up for me. I mean, we do the test and come back, you know, with the needs to be done.
Okay. But just to clarify quick, so again, this would still be open to family and everybody?
Yep.
It just includes commercial?
Commercial.
That's correct.
Okay.
Tom?
I'll confide your advice, so I vote yes.
Thank you.
Well, we're not voting yet.
Yeah.
I have, it's a public hearing.
Yep.
Anyone from the audience want to speak on the shellfish?
The issue.
Come up, please. Your name and address.
Joe Lyons, Whipper Will Drive in this area. I'm right at the end of the association's property, and from their south, it's always been open commercial for commercial shellfish takers. But north from the concrete foundation, which is the site of the Kaufman House, from there north, it has always been family, and it's family between the piers, not out in the middle, not anywhere else, just between the piers. And it had been stocked with shellfish for years. In the last couple of years, it has ceased. This gentleman to my left was in his boat last year, and I waved to him, tried to communicate with him, and you were saying the water was too shallow, you couldn't go in there, and that's what you said that day, and you passed me off. But what is obvious is the town has preserved the family area for years, and it's only been between the property docks. It's not been downriver where he's saying you're going to open it commercially. It always was open down there. That's no change. But the change would be if you start allowing people to go in between the individual docks where there's only two or three feet of water at low tide, okay? You don't want people going in there because they go across your yard. They are not allowed in there as far as property is concerned because it is all privately owned. So that's it. That's the point that we made, or tried to make, that you shouldn't turn over the portion that was historically family between the docks should not be open to commercial fishing. The statement was made that those areas were full of clams. I've been in between every one of those docks. They're not full of clams. The idea that there's overabundance is not valid, okay? You can go in there and dig all you want, and you're not going to find what this gentleman just said from my personal observation.
Okay, Chris, you want to respond to Joe?
I can respond to that, Joe.
Yeah.
Please do. That the Department of Marine Fisheries came down with five divers on November 7th.
Chris, can you just use the mic?
That the Department of Marine Fisheries, which we thought would be, you know, a non-biased organization to come in and do a bottom survey as asked by the board to look at the entire area, and their results were that that area is full. Now, what I will say is that you specifically talked about the areas in between the docks and the houses and so forth as not being, you know, available. That's available to everybody on every single dock, all the way around the town of Mashpee. In fact, you know, docks are built with staircases so people can transfer, go up and down that specific dock to be able to access those areas. So that is not the respective homeowner's land that's underwater. So that area's open to all people to fish.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on the issue? Okay, I make a motion. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. David?
Yes.
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 Tom? And I'm a yes. Now, we need to discuss on what we're going to, I need a motion to go with the recommendations as Christopher has presented tonight.
Motion to change the Great River South shellfishing area based on drawings provided as presented.
For commercial?
Second.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Discussion and approval of the oyster restoration project. Okay, we just did that.
No, this is a, this is different. This is an oyster restoration project.
Different one, okay. Part two.
Part two. So over a year ago, the Nature Conservancy approached the town and asked if we would be interested in doing an oyster restoration project somewhere in the town. So we started doing a little research into, you know, the TNC is a global conservation organization in 40 countries, and they do all types of restoration and conservation efforts. And so we began discussions. We quickly, I quickly contacted the Wampanoag Tribe and to get some historical perspective as to where oysters used to grow. Buddy Pocknett and his crew and stuff like that, we went out on boats, looking at bottoms, looking at, you know, where could something like this be effective? The reason why we were picked is because there are such a high nitrogen levels in our waters, and we're trying to get oysters to, you know, regrow naturally instead of us purchasing seed year over year over year. So we've looked at the Mashpee River, which unfortunately didn't come back because of its silty bottom. We looked at U-String Bay, similar situation. We looked out for Gooseberry Island, but we didn't want to encroach on the tribe's current aquafarm. We looked at areas like Thatch Island, Aquay Bay, and different areas. And one of the spots that, after doing, you know, some surveys and stuff like that, was an area off of Hamlin Pond towards the back. Now, hopefully you received this in your packet.
Yes, we did.
Okay. There is a map. But what I want to stress is that this is a very preliminary. I wanted to just give the board sort of the information of what we're working on. There are multiple levels of permitting process that we need to go through. The good news is the town doesn't, will not be paying for any of this. This is all funded by ultimately the TNC that, you know, gets their funding through donations and stuff, but also higher levels up. I mean, it goes as high as the FDA because they're looking for, you know, could this turn into a food source the way it used to be many years ago? These projects have been done, there's one currently being done in Fairhaven, Mass., Born, West Tisbury, Chilmark, Wareham, but also other states like Rhode Island has really stepped up their efforts in looking at these type of projects. And what I will say is the DMF is in the process of actually hiring, Mass. DMF, hiring an oyster restoration project specialist because they, they see that this is really where, you know, we should be going and looking at restorative efforts to get these fisheries back up and hopefully do a natural set, meaning that they naturally produce the oysters. So in conjunction with the tribe, we've been looking at these areas. And realistically, all I'm trying to, all I wanted to tell you is tonight that we're beginning the permitting process and moving forward, this could be a two-year project. And we've already reached out to local farmers in the area to, you know, TNC will actually buy the oysters from local growers to put into the restoration efforts. We have to put, we have to put shells down.
Now, Chris, there are cages already in Hamlin Pond.
So that's, excuse me, that's Mark Burdis' aquaculture farm?
Mm-hmm.
This would be actually laying down colch, so seed, and putting it down in an area that's not in an area where there's boat traffic. It's on the backside.
Okay.
The bottom's firm. Again, this has to go through environmental review, and it's actually, I've been told, might actually have to be signed by the governor because this project is one of the, one of the newest ones in the state. So with that being said, this is more of a notification to let the board know that this is what we've been trying to work on, see if this can actually be, come to fruition.
Okay.
So that's really, you know, if there's any other questions, but it's really spelled out pretty well in this 27-page document. We've already been through the MEPA process. That went very well. But there's many, many steps, and as I said to you before, this could be a two-year project, but I just wanted to inform the board as to some of the things that we're working on in order to mitigate the nitrogen, when not just looking at, you know, the generosity of the town giving us seed budgets and propagation budgets and stuff, so.
Yeah.
But if there's any further questions, I'm certainly available. I don't know if anybody peeled through this, but, you know, feel for you to reach out to my office at any time or whatever, too.
So, Chris, I just want to clarify. So are you looking for, that does say approval, so are you looking for our approval of recommending or recommendation to move forward?
I mean, I guess we could look at it that way. This is more of, this is going to come across your, your desks, you know, maybe in a year or two's time to get approval after we've done the initial approvals because we may get knocked out, you know, by some, the Army Corps of Engineers might not like it, our Department of Marine Fisheries may look and say, well, it's a productive bottom, even though we've sort of done a survey ourselves, but, do you know what I mean? So.
Madam, too.
I guess you could move forward and say, you know, do you want to initially approve it, but I don't know.
Ron, you have something to say, too?
I'd recommend doing a letter of support for the project only because oyster filtration, it's essentially the only thing really cleaning up the waters presently. You know, and seeding areas and allowing them to grow naturally is beneficial to the overall water environment, so I'd support and would ask the board to consider doing a letter of support of the project in case it helps you get traction as you go through the process.
I would just look for the board to advocate for this position taken and to support me signing off on anything that is required.
Sure. Well, I just add to that. I don't think anybody on this table is against restoring the, the health of the rivers and way and the clam shells, whatever. So you definitely have my support, and I think you have everybody's support on this board. It's important to me, and it takes forever to get things to get going. We're all looking for the Mashpee River and all of the other corners of the world here, so doing a great job. You certainly have my vote.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, a motion.
A motion to approve and recommend and letter of support if necessary.
Rodney, say.
To empower the town manager to support the project and restoration project going for Hamlin Pond and oysters.
Second. Second.
David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Catherine Laurent, award of DPW contracts, trash and recycling rental. Seems a year goes by so fast.
Didn't we just do this last month?
Sounds like.
She's got money coming back, that's all. So we recently opened bids for two of our annual contracts that run on the calendar year. The first one was for trash and recycling container services, so the containers that are at our various town building schools.
Now, have we used them before?
So the low bidder is a, a new vendor to us. They, as you note from the minutes, were significantly less than, than the second bidder. We did reach out to the references that they were, that they provided, although the references gave them glowing recommendations. I did speak to the company just to make sure that they understood the scope of the work because of the, the significant price difference, and they assured me that, that they are including all of the services that were requested, so.
Into the mic, Catherine.
So I am recommending that the town move forward with awarding a contract to Barrows Waste Systems for calendar year 2025.
Do I have a motion? Or any questions?
Motion approved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes for Barrows Waste Systems.
The second bid was for our annual contract for rental of portable toilets. These are used primarily in the summer seasons. We do have a few year-round locations. The sole bid that we received was from United Site Services. Again, we reached out to references, all of their references gave them favorable recommendations, so I'm recommending to you that we award a contract to United Site Services.
And a motion for United.
Motion to recommend, a motion to approve as presented, United Site Services for rental of portable toilets.
You have a second?
Second. And just one quick question to clarify. Again, this is, United Site Services, have they, we've used them before?
We have used them. It's been several years, which is another reason that I did want to check their references. We did have some issues with their service in the past, according to their references. No one else has experienced any issues, so I think having it run on the calendar year gives us time that if they do not fulfill the obligations of the contract, we can make a change before our busy summer season.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Catherine. And next is the recommendation for award of contract for design and engineering services for the new Mashpee Police Station. Catherine?
So we went out to, submitted a request for proposals for the design and engineering having to do with the, the new police station that's proposed. This funding was approved at the May Town Meeting or reauthorized at the May Town Meeting. We received five responses, and we invited two firms in for interviews. Both have had experience on the Cape with public safety facilities. The unanimous recommendation of the committee was to award a contract to Castle Booze Associates, KBA of Foxborough. The total project fee, which is, would be 2.85 million, would be from design development all the way through construction administrative services. So that contract would be contingent upon receiving the construction funding, which we're anticipating to have an article at the, the May Town Meeting in May election.
I like how they've designed the phases in the months that they will present, which is good.
Yes.
Okay.
Catherine, just clarity again for the, more for the public, but the new proposal of the police station will be, what, directly behind?
So we had looked at, as part of the feasibility study, we had looked at two plans. One was, was building behind the existing station. One was, was building it to the side closer to 151. So we'll still look at the different options, but at that time, the one that the, the committee had preferred was the one behind the existing station. So that would remain in operation during the construction and then would be demoed once the, the police department moved into the new facility with, in either scenario.
Would the existing building remain or would it be?
It would be, it would be demolished once, once the building was, was occupied.
Would that include restoring to wooded area?
So at this point, that would become parking. They're looking at part of the design, and again, this was based on the feasibility study, so it may change, but that the public parking would be in front of the building and the police department parking would be to the, to the back and side. So there would be some restoration, but part of that would be for parking.
I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
A motion approve, approve and recommend the contract of design engineering services for the new Mashpee Police Station.
I'll second that motion.
To Castle Booze Associate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, to Castle Booze Association.
David?
Associates.
I have a first and a second, David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? And I'm a yes. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Discussion and certification of hiring process of the Director of Natural Resources, Robert Tumino.
I just want to say to the board, as part of a reorganization, the harbor master would become the DNR Director, and there's no major shift per se, and I am looking for not just certification, but also confirmation of the appointment because he is a department head or would be.
Any discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion?
So you're looking for a motion for certification of the hiring process?
Certification and, certification and confirmation.
Confirmation.
Certification and confirmation of the hiring process for the Director of Natural Resources.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Yes, the motion.
Second.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Discussion of San Tuit Pond Preserve Trail Improvement Project Proposal, Daniel Kent. I know it's.
Me, ma'am?
Yes, please, thank you. You're up. That's okay.
Standing room only.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Good.
Dan Kent, Assistant Conservation Agent for the record. So I come before you today with some projects at San Tuit Pond Preserve. Some of the trails are pretty detrimental to the pond itself. They're at an extreme incline, and they're just getting eroded, and they have no erosion control or pretty much anything that's holding them back. So the packets you have in front of you cover all those with the pictures and everything. The worst one that there is, is the first site, Site One, which is in Figure 2.1. You can see the trail from there. So the plan is to install that whole trail with some erosion bars, which is basically pressure-treated six-by-six or four-by-six, pending on what, what's needed in the spot. This will be mostly six-by-sixes because it's so, it's just so beaten down, and also it goes right down to the pond. There is a lot of sedimentation at the bottom that's building up, that's leaching into the pond, as well as the cranberry bog, the old abandoned cranberry bog on the other side, so this really needs to be maintained and just established with something permanent that's going to protect it, so. That's the worst site there is. The middle site, number two, is not too bad. It needs some control, but right now, it's not that bad. So I think putting four-by-fours down would be perfect for that site. And then the other site, as you may or may not know, is the fish ladder itself. So at that site going down to the dam, it gets very heavily traveled, very, very heavily traveled by foot traffic and also by like mountain bikers because we do allow it on property. So with that being said, there are sections there that are new trails that people have formed that going down the bank that have become quite detrimental, as well as there's some areas that just need more vegetation. So in those pictures there, I want to say that is Figure Four, in Figure 4.1 and 4.2, you'll see that. There's a section for, with some yellow dots for plantings. That trail goes all the way up the side of the bank, and it's just a acceleratory trail that people use. I don't know if it's for mountain biking or just regular foot traffic, but nonetheless, it has to be shut down because it's just completely destroying the bank.
Are those concrete or wooden?
These are, so what's in place right now is four-by-sixes, and they are wood, so those are pressure-treated. So we're going to keep all that in place on this section of trail. There's no need to take it out right now because it's in fine shape.
You're going to extend it over?
Yeah, we're going to extend them over, and you can see on these ones, the rebar is on the outside, and that becomes a detriment because they bend over time, so we're just going to auger right through the six-bys or four-by-sixes and put the rebar straight through. They're also going to get these green bars here, which is called the dead man hanger, and that's just going to hold it into the bank, and those will have one rebar stake put into them as well. That's two feet long. So there is some hardware that'll go into the bank, but it will stabilize it in the end.
Now, this area is just for walking?
Correct. This area is just for walking. The BMX bikers, I've already talked to the local groups about it. Basically, they're going to have to either go down this at their own peril or just walk down it. The majority I see, they all walk down it.
They're not going to try to bring the bikes down there?
I would hope not. I recommend against it all, all the time, that's for certain, especially not just because it's an incline, but it's erosion bars and security and safety as well, so. But yeah, so this is for walking down only, especially once you get to the, the fish ladder itself. There is six-by-sixes and actual like highway fences, like the four-by-six, six-by-six highway fences that are about two feet tall, that you can't just ride your bike through, you have to pick your bike up and go through them. So, so it is all for walking. But yeah, this, this area, as you can see in Figure 4.2, the bottom's very sedimented out. There's a lot of erosion coming down the bank. It's not a little amount, to the point where these trees are starting to die back because their roots are being exposed completely on the edges. So that's becoming an issue as well because right now, it's a great view if you stand on it. You know, most of the trees have fallen there just because. You know, most of the trees have fallen there just because they've just fallen naturally just from dying back because of root exposure, so. So anything we can do for this section, the replanting of it as well, I just wanted to mention, will be extended on beyond that. I'm going to come up with a plan for that, but I wanted to get that on your minds tonight as well. In the river itself, we have some vegetation loss in the river, which is being looked into. But because of that, I want to get some vegetation right on the sides of the river. This photo is here, they show, I'm standing on the fish ladder looking down the Santuitt River with these photos. I'm going to come up with a plan for some native plants that can be put in what's called the riparian zone, which is where the water meets the land. That, this section needs to be strengthened quite a bit with riparian plants to enhance this section for a couple of reasons. One, it needs more plants. In this area, it's just too bare. You can see with the boulders there, the trees have already fallen back. It's not retaining the soil properly, we just need to replant it. So this is something that we have to go before conservation, but that's not a concern at all when it comes to planting. The other reason is because this section, with the fish ladder being kind of detrimental to the herring run, the herring build up a very large amount in the back of this. So if you are into bird watching, there is a large amount of cormorants, a large amount of ospreys, a large amount of predatory birds. That just line up and they pick at them all day. The more vegetation we can have there to reduce their eyesight and to get them not to want to go through the leaves or the trees or the branches, will increase the actual numbers of the herring passing up that ladder when they can. Right now, it backs up. The backup is being looked into, so Marine Fisheries and RCS is already on top of it. So they'll be doing something on their end, but anything we can do on ours, I think is going to be needed.
Now, Daniel, do we do this with grants?
No, so this is not, this won't be too bad. This will be covered by the Conservation Department. The project itself with the lumber will be about $700 to $800. And then with the plants, I'm not too concerned. I don't see it going anywhere over $500 for that. So the Conservation Department will cover that.
Okay.
One thing, Dan, I don't know if, it seems like a lot of these are smaller, little segmented projects. It could be a perfect Eagle project as well.
Yeah, that was going to be my next step, seeing who to reach out to. And I know the local scout troop has been eager to get some projects done. So this is going to be one of them, as well as there's two other projects I was really eyeing for them to do at Santuitt Pond, because it's more of a boardwalk style. That just needs to be shored up and rebuilt on some of the bog sections where you actually cross over the water. So yes, I will absolutely reach out to them for this.
If not, would they, if they, if I can get the word out, would they contact, should they contact you?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take all the help I can get, that's for certain.
Perfect.
Also, it could be like an AmeriCorps project would be a good.
AmeriCorps I've reached out to, they haven't fully started for the next season yet and they are booked for the winter. So that was, because I looked into them first, only because I wanted to use them for some GPSing as well for updating the maps on property. But they are booked through the whole winter, unfortunately.
Okay. The Section Three area, that hillside, it is culturally sensitive, but your projects, there's no excavation?
No, there won't be any excavation. It'll just be within Number Three, that would be maybe an inch and a half down with a two-foot-long rebar in the ground on each one.
All right.
That's all that would be, so. I can definitely check into it, though, if that is a concern.
And then essentially, you're going to allow the runoff to kind of fill it in?
The runoff, so with Section Three, the runoff will fill it in and the bars will be angled very slightly, just so any runoff of soil that's going to build up, it can also move into the bushes. When you have them just straight and flush, they will build up, the runoff, the soil will just go over the bar. So the goal in this section is to have it just runoff into the bushes to just pretty much reduce any concerns about that just building up anymore and just getting the sediment that's going to runoff into vegetated areas.
Okay.
So this was just a discussion, you don't need approval or to go forward?
Nope, so since this is land bank parcel, it's under the Select Board, so I just have to make sure that you are aware of all of it and if there's any concerns or anything like that.
Anybody have any concerns?
Nope, thanks, great.
I have a question. I'm looking at Figure Three and I'm just looking at the it looks as though the water is flowing, but there's a lot of soil in the trench. Is that something that you're going to excavate or try to remove?
No, we're just going to put the erosion bar in and then literally like an inch and a half is what we're going to just remove just for that four inch, three and a half inch wide, four by four to go in. And then that soil, we're going to put in the middle, in that little trench in the middle. We're not going to bring any fill or anything in of that nature. We're just going to let it build up naturally from there.
Yeah, I just assume see it removed unless it was, becomes stagnant. Then backfill it and close it out, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand. And with this area as well, with the abandoned bogs, there's more than enough sand, I will say, if we needed it.
There's a lot of it throughout the town, you know? There's a lot of exposed and, you know, we, I mean, I know that some of the land in back of my house, I wait for the water to come so that it flushes and moves some of the soil and the water that's been sitting there for some time.
Oh yeah, and you definitely need it sometimes, that's for certain.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Okay, presentation of three-year plan update from Cape Light Compact, Maggie Downey.
Hello, good evening. My name is not actually Margaret Downey. My name is Margaret Song. She is actually in Eastham, but sends her regards. She's doing a similar presentation and cannot transport herself here that quickly. I do also want to just, before I start, say that I've got 23 slides. I'm going to be going through them very quickly, not going through all of them because I do want to be mindful of your time, but if you have anything, happy to follow up, et cetera. I also, just because you said AmeriCorps, want to note that I am also a proud alum of that program.
Oh, good girl.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. So, for those folks in the audience that do not know who the Cape Light Compact is, there are three different things that we focus on: power supply, energy efficiency, and consumer advocacy. This is just a little bit of stats, I'm not going to read them to you, but last year, we had over 1,000 folks that were in your community that took advantage of this and got about $2 million in incentives. So this is your reminder to participate. Here are some highlights, for those folks that do not know, we offer no-cost assessments. Basically, you pay for them in your electric bills and some gas bills, so again, participate. And then for those folks that are not aware, we've had some robust heat pump incentives. They go up to $10,000. So if you are thinking about replacing your heating system with heat pumps, please do take advantage. Some other things that are highlights, some of these in yellow highlight are now fully subscribed. But we did have a grant for e-bikes, you've seen those electronic bikes around. We had grants for those folks that needed alternative transportation, low and moderate income focused. And then we also had a low and moderate income focused program that paired weatherization, heat pumps, solar, and batteries. We're hoping after this demonstration that we're able to continue this program for those folks that really can't afford to make these very big investments. I will say, though, that we do still have rebates out there for appliances, including AC, air purifiers, dehumidifiers, and clothes dryers. And that is not income constrained. Okay, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this one. So we just got a grant for the Energy Saver Home Loan. This is through the Massachusetts Community Climate Bank. For those folks that are really looking to make some deep investments to decarbonize their homes, this is another offering that we are providing in the form of a loan. As you can see, it is income constrained. You have to make less than 135% of area median income. We put the dollar amounts there just so that you could see it. And you do have to have energy savings of 20%. How do you know if you have 20% savings? You're not going to know, which is why we have folks on call so that they can help you identify whether you do have and can demonstrate these savings. But the reason why this one is very exciting is because the loans go from $10,000 to $100,000. You can see that it's got a very low loan and we've got some local banks that are participating. These are all of the different things that you can do. So if you need to remove trees or you need to do re-roofing, you need to do all of those things to get you ready to do these installations, you can also finance that here. This is yet a different loan that we've got. We are going to be launching this in December of 2024. Again, it's lower interest rates, we're looking at less than 5% at this point, 10 years and up to $50,000. This is for solar PV only. Okay, so the reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about our three-year plan. The rest of it was kind of precursor to let you know what we've been working on. As you folks may know, the legislature has been enacting a lot of statutes. We are now in a paradigm where we are really working towards decarbonization. It's no longer about energy efficiency and that's what the legislature has put in place. They have given us goals that we need to meet. And so in that, we actually are focusing a lot on removing fossil fuels and installing heat pumps. So three focus areas are decarbonization, equity, and customer experience. Again, I'm not going to read this, but if you are a charitable nonprofit, if you're a small business, if you have a community organization that can help us to accomplish our goals, we are looking to do that with renters, landlords, et cetera. We also have some statewide offerings that we are proposing. And I should say that this three-year plan is in front of the Department of Public Utilities right now. We are waiting for them to do their review and all of this is subject to approval. But if you know folks that are in the moderate income category, low income category, you will see that a lot of these things are being done at no cost. And then we are trying to do a lot to help triage, make sure that people don't have to wade through a lot of the paperwork. It's really daunting to have to look at this rebate paperwork, figure out what qualifies, et cetera. And so that's why we're doing a lot of focus on trying to figure out how to get people to the right programs without having them to, you know, figure out how to best do that. So always call us. And then we've done some diversity. So again, the statute is now in place where the Clean Energy Center, if you might have heard of it, they can request at least $12 million a year. That funding has now been increased to $24 million a year. So you will see that there's a lot of focus that's going to be taking place on supplier diversity and really diversifying our workforce. This is a website, if you ever want to go to it, for all the excruciating data that is available. You'll also see that there's going to be a fairly robust marketing campaign. While we have these programs, a lot of folks do not know that this exists. So it's always important to make sure that, as long, you know, you're paying for it. So we want to make sure people know about it. And then these are some of the power supply rates. I had noted that this is one of the main things that we do. And you can see our prices as compared to ever sources. You don't have to choose us, we actually are really here just to offer a competitive option. And you can see that, you know, in many cases, we are lower than ever source, but we are not always lower. So, you know, you should always make sure that you are reading your terms and conditions and making sure that you understand what's going on with the prices. And as you can see, the prices are going up. And so it's pretty daunting for a lot of folks as energy costs are becoming more and more of their daily bills. We've also done some presentations in the past, that's not for today, but obviously, if you're ever interested, we can always come back. There's a lot that's going into what's driving the higher prices and so we do always want to make sure that people are aware of that and then can also have an option that's competitive. So I tried to do that in 10 minutes, I think I may have. So stay up to date with us and if you've got any questions, this is the way to reach us.
You did a great job.
Thank you, I'm sorry that I went so quickly.
No, no, you did great.
I did it.
Well done.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions?
Where do you advertise the workforce development programming? How do you find out about that as a general?
Always give us a call, so that 1-800-797-6699. If you know anybody who is looking to get into this industry, have them give us a call, connect them with our workforce development. We have all sorts of resources that we have either developed or in the process of developing. There are some licenses, et cetera, that folks need to get to, but we are looking for, A, suggestions on how to do it better and B, there are already things that are in place that we can connect people to.
Is there a natural place that that could live on the town? Where, you know, job market's doing really well, but the homeownership and stuff like that, these are probably good-paying jobs if there's any way to promote, you know, equitable employment opportunities for people that pay a living wage. I think we should try to, you know, get that information out there, especially to like our low-income housing residents. It might be good to connect the dots.
I agree. Anybody?
Fair enough.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay, approval of the temporary sign permit for the Mashpee firefighters homeless for the holidays. We do this at the Rotary every year.
This is a traditional thing.
Traditional thing, yes.
Just a formality.
Motion approve the annual temporary sign permit for the Mashpee firefighters homeless for the holidays. Charity fund.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Okay, next, discussion of residence correspondence regard to Cape Cod Dog Center. Okay, I am going to open this up, but I ask for everybody to be polite, please. And I'm going to refer our town manager on this, please.
If you want to start with whatever the folks have that wanted to come in and speak before the board and then I'll be more than happy to follow up at the conclusion.
Who would like to come up and speak first? This is not a hearing, this is just to listen.
Good evening, my name is Cassie Lemire and I thank you for having me. I want to start by thanking the board for allowing myself and others to come before you tonight with our stories. Our collective concerns and fears needed to be heard and you, the board, gave us a venue where we would have this freedom to speak, to speak of the pain and the horror and the abuse that we have all endured. We may have endured it in different forms, but in the end, it has brought us together as we stand before you tonight. I want to start by sharing the profound and deep effect that my dog, Moe, had on my life. When our children grew up, moved out of the house, and moved forward in their life journey, our home became very quiet and empty. It didn't take long for me to want to fill that emptiness left by my four children with four dogs. It didn't take long for me to want to fill the emptiness left by them with all different types of dogs. The funny thing was each dog resembled the personality of each one of our children and our home was now full of life, energy, love, and fun again. I am sure many of you have discovered, whether it be a dog or cat or some other type of animal, a pet can win your heart over and forever change you. We that have had the blessing of knowing this unconditional love given to us by our furry family members know that nothing can ever replace it. One of the happiest days of one's life is when a puppy is brought home. One of the saddest is when we have to say goodbye to it. On August 30th, on 2024, at 7:00 AM, our lives forever changed. I received a call from our eldest daughter, Jessica, that our Moe had passed away. You see, we were on vacation and facilities such as Cape Cod Dog Center are to care for people's pets and when they go on vacation. We had used Cape Cod Dog Center to care for our pets frequently over the past 10 years. We questioned a few things at different times over the years, but we were blinded by lies and manipulation and cover-ups. So we continue to use Cape Cod Dog Center as our kennel, groomer, and doggy daycare. We were extremely clear about what our dogs needed to be cared for properly and the owner, Kaylee Cullen, promised us that those needs would be fully met. Kaylee promised us that our two Newfoundland's, Moe and Joy, who were father and daughter, would never be in a cage or kennel. It was decided that Moe would be up front, behind the desk during the day and when they were boarding at night, Moe and Joy would be free in a room alone together. On the 30th of August, I realized that the promises Kaylee Cullen made to me and other customers of Cape Cod Dog Center meant nothing to her. You see, I was told by Kaylee Cullen, after she viewed camera footage of Moe the day that he died, that Moe died peacefully in his sleep. But I knew right away there was something not right with this. Moe had just been given a clean bill of health from our veterinarian, Dr. Leach. As my husband and I packed up our RV and headed home, we received a call from Dr. Leach and he told us that Moe clearly had passed from bloat. For those of you who don't know what bloat is, it's when a dog's stomach becomes dilated and distended due to an accumulation of gas and fluids. The stomach then rotates, trapping the gas or fluid inside. This is a serious and life-threatening condition that affects many dogs, but is more common in large and deep-chested dogs. Bloat is preventable and can be alleviated by properly caring for a dog to relieve symptoms of bloat as they occur. Even if a person is not familiar with the medical term "bloat," any reasonable person within a reasonable amount of experience caring for a dog should be able to recognize the troubling behavior a dog demonstrates leading up to bloat and care of it to prevent bloat before it occurs and be able to recognize the symptoms of bloat as they are occurring and provide the necessary care for the dog to alleviate before the dog passes away. When I told Kaylee Dr. Leach said Moe passed from bloat, she stated, "I don't know what bloat is." I texted her a website explaining what bloat was for her and her staff, and I asked her, "How do you not know what bloat is when you have run a facility for dogs for 10 years?" I reminded her that we told her if our dogs were to exhibit any signs of distress, anxiety, pain, or discomfort, she was to call Dr. Leach immediately. I knew when I needed to see the video. Even if her staff did not know the signs of distress that Moe was exhibiting were the beginning signs of bloat, it was clear from the video that he was in distress and painful, horrible distress. Yes, I watched the video of Moe's death, a video that has forever changed me, and I will never be able to unsee what I saw in that 10-hour video. At the start of the video, I noticed right away that Moe was showing signs of duress. He clearly was not himself, and he was pacing. You see, you needed to look at Moe twice to see him move. He was such a big, graceful dog. His hugs would make you feel protected and loved. As the video went on, I told Kaylee, who was sitting with me, that her staff never had cleaned the room of the feces and urine and never cared to look at Moe long enough to see something was not right. They fed him, and then another staff member came into the room, grabbed the food bowls, and walked out. The staff member never picked up the messes and cared to notice Moe was clearly distressed. And they did not notice that what he was obviously going through at that time. Moe was given access to water right after he ate, lots and lots of water. I turned to Kaylee and said he shouldn't have had access to water until at least a half hour after he ate. She said, "I did not know this." Any reasonable person running a dog care facility for 10 years should know a dog should not drink large amount of water after they eat, especially a large breed who can bloat. I continued watching the video, and Moe was overheated, anxious, alone, and desperate. This caused excessive panting, which increased his gases. And by the time Moe was placed overnight in the room with his daughter, he had an overabundance of gases in his stomach, was then fed, and then given access to lots of water. Moe was going from door to door looking for help. He was belly crawling and noticeably getting worse as time went on. He was panting and obviously in pain. And the four staff members that were there for 45 minutes after Moe started exhibiting signs of distress, no one checked on him or Joe or Moe, I'm sorry. They left the building before to return to the room until 7:00 a.m. the next morning. Moe continued to worsen and could only lay down for a couple minutes at a time due to the pressure on his lungs. He had to reposition himself constantly, and he was panting and pacing and trying to get the help by paring at his daughter. Kaylee told me she watched the video at 10:00 p.m., and he was lying down. Had she watched with a careful and sensitive eye, she would have seen that Moe at 10:00 p.m. was exhibiting signs of bloat. She would have seen his distended stomach, and his flues were wide open due to panting. He clearly wasn't lying down for any length of time. Moe suffered for six hours after Kaylee said she saw him on the camera. At that point, he slowly moved to the center of the room where the feces was, laid down, gasping for air numerous times before succumbing to a heart attack at 4:13 on August 30th. I will now bring you to the day before, on the 29th of August, the day that set the stage for the demise of Moe. You see, Moe was never supposed to be in a cage or held hostage all alone with no air conditioning or window for eight hours. Not only had we told Kaylee that the dogs were not to be kennelled in a cage, but we told her that if any dog of our dogs' needs could not be met at any time, we were to be called so we could pick them up. No call, no text, nothing. The reason now was becoming clear to me and was further solidified by what I was about to learn. Cape Cod Dog Center is overcrowded, understaffed, has unsanitary conditions, has poorly-trained workers and some whom abuse and neglect the animals. And Kaylee Cullen instructs these workers to lie to customers, telling them their pets behaved well and no concerning issues and had all their needs met while staying at the Cape Cod Dog Center. Moe did not have to die the morning of the 30th, nor should he have suffered neglect and abuse on the 29th. The death of Moe was caused by ignorance of lack of proper training and understaffed and overcrowded facility and a lack of proper supervision by Kaylee Cullen. I learned after talking with many former employees and clients at Cape Cod Dog Center who are here tonight or have sent letters, texts, pictures, and videos to the town or the animal control officer, the many disturbing horror stories of abuse, neglect, overcrowding, understaffing, poor training, and so much more. But I will let them tell their own stories, stories which are full of numerous dog injuries and attacks on other dogs and workers. My goal for tonight is as follows: for the clients of Cape Cod Dog Center to learn the truth of what is taking place behind closed doors, to create a space for all employees at Cape Cod Dog Center, past and present, to be heard, and to make it so they are never again silenced by the threats and bullying of Kaylee Cullen, and finally, to seek justice for Moe and my family. Thank you.
Awfully sorry to hear about your loss.
Thank you so much, sir.
I lost a dog. I still can't get over it. The only reason I don't have a dog now is because that dog died. It's hard to deal with.
They are irreplaceable.
I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Sorry for it.
Anyone else want to speak on your behalf? Rodney? Oh, excuse me.
Good evening. I'm Tim Seifert of Sandwich, Massachusetts. My dog, Aria, has also been attending Cape Cod Dog Center for a number of years now. On the same weekend that Moe unfortunately passed away, my dog was also boarding there from Friday to Monday afternoon of Labor Day weekend. And we picked the dog up Monday afternoon, and we were told that she was fine, did not have any issues all weekend. And we brought her home, and she immediately drank a ton of water. And about half hour after she got home, she started to have extreme diarrhea. And after 24 hours, it was not getting any better. In fact, it was getting worse. And I contacted my vet, Shawnee Animal Hospital in Sandwich, and they had me bring her in and ask for a stool sample from her. And I couldn't get one until I got to the animal hospital. And at that point, it was 100% liquid. And they recommended subcutaneous fluids and continued monitoring of her blood work and her fluids. And I ended up having to take her to Cape Cod Veterinary Specialist born on Thursday that week to have her admitted for several days due to extreme dehydration because of her extreme diarrhea. And as unpleasant as that sounds, unfortunately, this was not the first time that my dog came home from this facility with some kind of gastrointestinal illness. And I almost lost my dog that weekend as well. It's really hard to have to tell my 11-year-old daughter that this might be the last time she gets to see her dog. Thankfully, my dog has since recovered. But in the intervening months and a half, two months now, I have yet to get any clear answers from both Cape Cod Dog Center and its owner as well as from the Mashpee Animal Control Officer. Beginning of October, on October 1st, we spoke with them and, you know, asked for an investigation. And I have yet to receive a copy of that report despite having submitted a request to the town on several occasions. We've submitted a number of questions to Kaylee, the owner of Cape Cod Dog Center, in writing via email, and did not get any clear answers as to what happened that weekend. You know, what was my dog exposed to? You know, why she was sick? In fact, you know, she thanked us for letting her know that our dog came home ill because she likes to inform other owners of their pets who are there that their dogs are ill, while in the same breath and sentence saying that there was another dog there that weekend who was ill, but never informed us, having just said she would inform us and is glad that we did inform her of those circumstances. So in the intervening month and a half since we began looking into this, I witnessed online attacks and bullying against people who speak out about and, you know, speak up about their experiences and their pets' experiences there. And it's quite alarming. And I know the governor recently signed Ollie's Law to look into recommendations to strengthen the regulations and requirements for boarding facilities and groomers. And I don't know what the regulations are here in town, that the town has adopted locally, but there's something not right in this, at this business where dogs go there repeatedly and come home ill, you know, out of nowhere, having been given clean bill of health. And obviously, unfortunately, in one instance, you know, something tragic happened. And I just wanted to make sure that the town was aware that something was not right over there. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have of me and my experience and my dog's experience there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, sorry for your loss, certainly. But I would agree, there may be some questions and answers that you deserve.
Thank you.
But I'll do the best I can to answer.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay. Just state your name and...
Lauren Bartlett Cahill. Some of you on the board know me. I have been taking my dog to Cape Cod Dog Center. I was there for several years. There were a few problems, but like Mr. Seifert said, you know, dogs get sick, things happen. Then my dog got bit. I have to be honest, I did not see the bite. I have a very, very large dog. I have a St. Bernard who has an enormous head. My husband noticed the bite. We took her to our vet, who was very concerned. He said, "This isn't a normal bite. Somebody had her head for quite a while. She was very bruised." I said, "Oh, okay." To be honest, my feeling was we're dealing with dogs, and dogs, in their essence, are animals. So things like this can happen. So I called to report the bite and ask if there was a film. Because obviously, if something had a hold of a head this big, we would see it. I spoke to Kaylee personally, who told me that she would review the film and get back to me. She got back to me, and she said, "Must have been a blind spot in the camera. We didn't see anything, didn't see any bite. Nobody was aware of anything had happened. They did not know she'd been bit." Again, I said, "Okay, well, you know, it happens." She offered to pay my vet bill. I said, "No, thank you. I take care of my animal. My animal has insurance. Don't worry about it." That was handled okay, because again, things happen with dogs. It's what happened after that point that I think should cause concern. My vet said, "I'm wondering why this was never reported." I said, "I don't, am I supposed to report it?" He said, "No. Cape Cod Dog Center is supposed to report that there was a bite at the facility." So I said, "Oh, well, there was a bite. I'm now reporting it." He said, "No, no, no. You have to call the dog officer," which I did. I had several conversations with the dog officer. He said, "He took all my information. He's going to write everything down. It's all good. I'm still calm. Fine. No problem. Things happen." Then Kaylee called me and said she wanted to let me know that she would be again happy to pay the bill and that she had reported the bite. And I said, "No, I reported the bite." "Oh, oh, my mistake." "Okay." The dog officer called me back. He said, "He was told there was no tape, that it must have been a blind spot, nothing to see. We don't know who bit her, but since all the dogs are supposed to be vaccinated, we're not going to worry about it. He'd be sure to document it. Everything was great." "Great. Okay, fine. Let's move on." I removed my dog from their care, and she hasn't been back since the day of the bite. Now, the situation comes up with Moe, and the dog officer is following up on people. He called me, and he said, "He doesn't understand why he doesn't remember me and why he doesn't have a report." I said, "Well, that's concerning, because I spoke to you three times, and you assured me that you did write a report. So where is the report?" He said, "I've never spoken to you." I said, "You've spoken to me three times." He said, "You know, I can't figure out why I can't find any paperwork on this." And I said, "Neither can I, but that's very concerning." He said, "Okay, well, do you want me to write this up now?" And I said, "It should have already been written up." He said, "Oh, I understand." And then he said something that should give everyone pause. He said, "Am I allowed to write your name on this report?" And I said, "I'm confused. Why wouldn't you write my name on this report?" He said, "Are you afraid of reprisals?" I said, "From who, the dog mafia?" "But I don't understand. This is the silliest thing I've ever heard in my entire life. My dog was bitten. This is the dog's name. This is my name. I've been a town employee for almost 20 years. There's not too many people in town that don't know at least my name." I said, "Write my name. Here's the spelling. Here's my address. Here's my phone number. I don't understand what you just said." He said, "Well, I just didn't know if, you know, like I said, reprisals." "I'm sorry. That's the craziest thing I've ever heard. All this is, is a report that the dog was bitten, and it's documented. What could possibly be a reprisal for that? It doesn't make any sense." So again, I'm not one to shut my mouth. I didn't plan on speaking today. I do have a big mouth. Why wasn't it documented? And that last line, "Fear of reprisals." So that's what I have to say. Lauren Bartlett Cahill, 24 Sheffield Place. You know, it is what it is. So thank you for listening. Sorry that I had to step out when Cassie was speaking.
Thank you so much.
I just, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm actually, oh, I'm sorry.
We need your name and address.
Jenny Longvell, 607 Carriage Shop Road in East Falmouth. I'm actually here to support Cape Cod Dog Center, and I just wanted to just briefly share my experience with Cape Cod Dog Center. This is Millie. Unfortunately, we had to put her down in September of 2021. My husband and I traveled to New York State. We entrusted Millie to Cape Cod Dog Center. We boarded her with them. She was fine. She was a robust puppy, 11-month-old. We had given explicit instructions, if anything happened, just to give us a call. Her veterinarian was down the street, Leach Animal Hospital. Later that evening, we got a call from the Cape Cod Dog Center, from one of the staff members, saying that Millie was starting to vomit and started to vomit profusely. They would keep an eye on it, keep us posted. Couple hours later, we got a call saying that her status, she had decompensated, just was now vomiting blood. was now vomiting blood. Being out of state, we were beside ourselves, and the staff member offered to take Millie down to Leach Veterinary Practice so that they could check on her. We wholeheartedly said yes and thank you. Millie was evaluated at Leach, was told that she needed a higher level of care, that staff member took Millie in her personal vehicle to the Born Animal Hospital. They did not have a surgeon on staff, that staff member took Millie in her own car and transported her to VCA in Waymouth Animal Hospital and stayed with Millie until she was seen and admitted, during which time she was in constant contact with myself and my husband. Unfortunately, Millie had an endoscopy procedure the next morning. We were en route back from New York, and they found a large gastric tumor that could not be resected. It was actually a malignancy. Her death was not a result of any care from, or mis-care from Cape Cod Dog Center. I want to be very clear about that. We ended, we put Millie down. The next day, we went to Cape Cod Dog Center. We were not charged for any services that they provided. And then the staff sent us a bereavement card and a beautiful, God, it was stunning bouquet of flowers for offering their condolences. We've had a positive, had a positive experience with Cape Cod Dog Center, and if we ever did get another dog, we would, we would go back to them. So I just wanted to share our experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here and having your time. My name is Manuela Herr. I am from Martins Mills. I bring my animals to Cape Cod Dog Center. I work in law. I travel to the courtrooms, Cape and Islands and off Cape. I've left my animals in the care of Cape Cod Dog Center. This past summer, my daughter had a wedding shower, and she decided that she was, you know, graduated and decided to get her own golden retrievers, in which the puppy ended up tearing some of the flooring at the Cape Cod Dog Center. I want you to know that the facility is amazing. They invest into what they have. A lot of people don't understand across the Cape, the different dog facilities that are out there. But because of my work, I do know what it is out there. So I can assure you that she invests in the facility. The flooring is rubber with epoxy over it, which is good for the joints of the animals and the caretakers that are in the facility. That flooring is over $10,000 to replace. I know I called, and only a certified specialist that could replace that flooring would have to come from Pennsylvania with two days lodging to replace that floor, which I offered to replace the floor, but the owners are going to take care of that. Anything that happens there, she calls me. I'm a very good friend of Dr. Jonathan Leach, and I've spoken to him intensively about the facility and the wonderful care that is given there. Like all companies, it's hard with different employees. Some people have good experiences, some people don't have good experiences. Animals are so family to us, and it's very difficult. And I am sorry that happened to that dog. But bloating does happen to animals. It did happen to one of my sister's animals, and time is of the essence to fix a bloating situation. But I want you to know that the facility in your town is amazing, just absolutely amazing. She puts a lot of effort. She puts money into that facility. And yes, people come out when something is bad, but no one ever comes out when something is really good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Not great with public speaking, but my name is Catherine Mercurio, and I live on Lowell Road. And I have been going to this facility since she opened it. My dog is my child, and I would never, I mean, this facility is amazing, and I'm so sorry that that happened, that your dog had bloat, and it's a terrible, terrible thing because they are like our children. But this facility, I've been inside it many, 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 many times. It is very clean, and everything that this woman that just spoke, it is an amazing, the people that work there, they're wonderful, and I think this is, it's a great thing that we have in Mashpee for people like myself who work, and we don't want to leave our dogs all day alone. And I, I can't say enough good about it. I'm very sorry these things have happened. Our dogs get sick. I've had two dogs that had heart attacks, but that is, I just wanted to come out and support this place. Thank you.
My name is Katie. I'm from Barnstable Village. I was employed at Cape Cod Dog Center as a daycare attendant from February of 2020...
Would you bring the mic up closer to you?
Sorry. February 2023 through October, early October of 2023. I'm a professional in the pet care industry, like 10 years. I have a degree in animal care. It's not just a hobby. I'm not just a high school student. This is my industry, and I feel an ethical obligation to speak up when I see something that needs to be changed. I sent in a nice, long email. I hope you guys all got that. Sorry that it was so long. I listed concerns and deficits, including lack of staff training, which is one of my main concerns, insufficient staffing, especially the ratio of dogs to people, significant number of dogs that were not suited to the daycare setting. And I explained in the email whether they were anxious or irritable, for lack of a better term. Lack of defined protocols and established procedure, lack of transparency and communication with pet parents, and lack of timely action regarding health concerns with the dogs. Included in my email was three email threads between the owner and I, where I expressed my concerns. There was also a four-page document of handwritten notes from my first couple of weeks of employment. I am happy to talk with anyone who has questions, wants further information. When I saw that we had 10 minutes for this, I was like, "I can talk for 10 minutes." Everything that you've heard from clients is valid. Everyone's had good experiences. I had good experiences at Cape Cod Dog Center. But that does not negate the things that need to change, the things that need to be done better. The people of Cape Cod deserve to be able to trust a business when they drop off their loved one, and they should be able to know, have transparency about what has occurred and what, what they can expect from a business when they entrust their loved one. And yes, the staff is wonderful, because we work hard and we care. Let's see, from the very end of my email. Anyone working professionally with dogs, especially with giant breeds, should be aware of the common recommendations to help prevent bloat, the common risk factors, including giant breed, senior age, and the signs to watch for. Anyone working with dogs in a professional capacity should have this basic knowledge. I believe that there are steps that should have been taken that could have prevented Mo's suffering and perhaps even his death altogether. Had the staff been properly trained, they would have noticed the obvious signs of Mo's critical condition and been able to get him medical attention right away. The thing that concerns me the most is that I brought these concerns to the owner several times, and very clearly, you can see those emails. I would like to express that while I don't feel enough was done to address my concerns, I did always feel heard by Kaylee. She responded, acknowledging my concerns as valid and suggesting that changes should be made. And after several conversations over many months, there was an incident, a dogfight, that resulted in my thorn email, the subject line is "Continued Concerns," and ultimately led to my terminating my employment at CCDC. I felt I could no longer risk my physical safety and mental, emotional well-being by continuing to work there. I knew that unless changes were made, more staff and dog injuries would occur. In my professional opinion, the daily operations of CCDC expose DAFT, dogs and staff, to excessive risk to their safety and well-being. This is apparent, given the recent incident resulting in the death of our beloved Mo, as well as the other complaints. I believe further exterior oversight and guidance is needed at Cape Cod Dog Center to ensure the safety and well-being, emotional and social included, of the dogs and staff, and to ensure the transparency of operations with clients and pet parents. Thank you for hearing us. It's important. We appreciate it.
My name's Kaylee Cullen. I'm the owner of Cape Cod Dog Center. My address is 15 Howland Lane, East Sandwich. I do feel like hearing from me is crucial at this point, and I know that, you know, everybody has a lot to say and a lot of feelings, things like that, and I do want to hear them, and I understand where they're coming from with a lot of them, to be honest. I mean, I work with animals. I've done this for 20 years. I invested my entire career, I invested my entire life into this. You know, I did pay like an industry professional, Scott Learned, to come in to the town to help me design the facility to the needs of the dogs, you know, and I have an extensive knowledge in what needs to be done there. When it comes down to it, you know, unfortunately, there's been some lapses in leadership, some things that weren't perfect, some employees that weren't perfect, some customers that weren't perfect, and I wasn't perfect either, let's be real. You know, we're all human. But ultimately, I take responsibility for that every day, and I'm sorry, you know, to the people that have been unfortunately let down, but, you know, those voices are louder than the nice things that are to be said. And, you know, honestly, I'm here trying to do my best. I moved to Cape Cod, seeing that there was a deficit in this field. You know, I was living up in Boston, had a successful career there, and said, "You know what? I'm going to come down to Cape." I started looking at all the businesses. I realized they were basically the pound. And I said, "You know, this doesn't have to be this way. It can be enjoyable. We could have a fun, safe place." You know, and so 10 years ago, I started my business, and I've had, you know, success with that, based on, you know, word of mouth, customers, you know, many happy people as well. You know, obviously, happy customers, happy employees, and then some unhappy, you know, in regards to what happened with Mo. It's an awful tragedy, you know, obviously, as a team, we were all disappointed. We felt guilt. We felt misery. We felt everything, you know, and it's, it's something for me in my career, I've never experienced. I've never had a dog pass as an animal caregiver in 20 years. You know, so for me, that was a very difficult mountain to climb, you know, and I faced my own internal conflicts of, "What do I do now? Do I stop doing this? Do I kill myself? Do I leave town?" You know, and I, I don't want to do that. I want to be here for the people that need me and my place and the dogs, and all I've done is try to turn this into a positive by, you know, increasing the transparency of my business. I've installed 35 webcams that everyone will be able to see everything that goes on every second of every day. Every customer will be able to look on their cell phone and say, "There's my dog. That's what he's doing. He's right in that, you know, wherever he is," to dispel all of these rumors and these questions. I've been dealing with for two years now of people behind my back going online, saying, "You're a dog murderer. You're a this or that." And, and without speaking to me personally, or coming to me with these concerns. You know, with, with Aria's owner, I'm sorry with him, you know, I didn't realize that he wasn't getting any correspondence from myself or Animal Control. When I had communicated with Animal Control, he came, he did his inspections, he did his reports. To my knowledge, he was answering him, and we all determined that his dog was 15 years old and had a virus, based on what CCBS was telling me, that this dog has been in and out of hospitals for months, that this was not, you know, of our negligence or fault. You know, things are going to happen. Dogs are going to get bacterial, viral, you know, infections. Best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, they could pass away. We do have informed consent forms for all of these things, so that customers know, unfortunately, life includes death. You know, we handle these things as we learn, as we go. You know, this is, like I said, something that's new for me. I've never experienced, but I reacted the best that I could with the most compassion available that I could offer. I offered them everything, you know, money, my time, to hear me, to cry with them, and ultimately, there wasn't, nothing, you know, nothing was enough. Nothing is enough. And so I started to receive threats and hate messages and online blasting, and, you know, my life has just been hell for months, you know, and it's just, it's exhausting as a person who put their entire life into this. And, you know, I know I've let some people down, I've disappointed some people, but I am a human, and, you know, I'm here to be heard and to offer support or help to these people in any way that I can. But at this point, you know, beyond my own mental health, I'm not really sure what they want from me. You know, I'm offering, like I said, compassion, listening, support, everything under the sun, and I'm sorry for, you know, any of the customers or employees that I didn't provide the leadership to that I needed to. But things have changed a lot, you know, even in the time that these people who haven't worked here any year and a half, most of my staff has completed Dog Gurus College, which is an industry-specific program. I pay $300 a month for them to access. They go online, they watch thousands of hours of videos, so it's not like my staff has never been trained. They all receive Pet CPR and First Aid Certification, which we hold classes monthly at the dog center. They all know what bloat is. I know what bloat is. I said, "I did not know that he had bloat." I didn't say that I didn't know what bloat is. I'm obviously a highly educated professional person. You know, it's really unfortunate tragedy. It's miserable, but I think it's just been turned into a nightmare, you know, and I would like it to be seen and heard that my intentions are good for this town, and that's all I've been here for, is to, you know, love the animals. I work in a care profession because I care, and that is what I'm here for and to invest my entire life into. And if the town and the people don't want me here, then I can just leave, you know? I can always sell my business and move on with my life, but I, I'm standing here as myself, and I don't, I don't want that, and I don't think anybody else does either, and I would just like the nonsense to be over. I don't want every day of my life to be miserable based on crap on social media. I just want to enjoy, you know, and enjoy my dogs and my happy business, and, you know, the people who didn't like it two years ago, I'm sorry, you know? Please cry about it to, you know, your friends or whatever, but ultimately, it shouldn't determine the legitimacy of my business, because if you talk to thousands of other people, they've had a great time. So, you know, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, I'm here, I'm a professional, I'm willing to work with the town, I'm fully aware of Ollie's Law. It's something that I actually support, and I've actually been in contact with the state and said, "Hey, if you need help or you need perspective, I'll invite you to come on in my place. Watch every day." Animal Control's come over, I don't know, 35 times. He's there every day. So if there was anything wrong, I think everybody would know about it. There's no secrets. There's no dirty lies. There's no manipulation. This is just the truth, the reality that we're living in. So that's what's exhausting to me, is that this stirred-up feelings has turned into this big explosion of where we're here right now, when ultimately, it's an exaggeration of feelings, and it's not based on what's reality, and I do feel like that just needs to be known.
Thank you.
And if you have questions for me, I'm available anytime.
Okay. I'm going to turn this over to Rodney.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to remind everyone, the kennel license is issued by the town clerk. The regulations are written by the Board of Health. The enforcement is through the Animal Control Officer, who's an employee of the Police Department. I can report to the board that the protocols and regulations are under review. I spoke earlier today and have spoken with the health agent. I can also report that there have been two complaints, and one of the complaints has been reviewed by the command structure at the Police Department and MSPCA Deputy Director James Hanlon, and also the Cape and Islands First Assistant District Attorney. At this particular time, there are no charges or any criminal element in that particular complaint. There's been a second complaint that is under investigation, so obviously, it would be inappropriate to have any discussion on that matter. I can also refer to what has been referred to earlier, that Governor Healy did sign, I believe it was House Bill 4919, an act to increase kennel safety, that was also known as Ollie's Law. This legislation updated the licensing and regulation of kennels and other pet boarding facilities to keep animals in their care safe. So at this particular time, I understand that there is a lot of emotion relative to the subject matter, and I'm certainly not one to be insensitive to... the subject matter, and I'm certainly not one to be insensitive to any of the emotions that have been expressed, but there's no action for the board to take.
Thank you. We know it's sad, and we're sorry for your loss, and we thank you for being here and expressing both sides of concern. Anyone have any questions?
No, I think we just...
David? No. It's not in our preview to make judgment. It's up to the ones that have the licensing for you, and we're sorry that this had to happen, and I'm sorry that we had to hear this. And we hope that you can work this out, and it's, our pets are our babies, no question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have something to say about the matter.
My daughter worked there, and she's always loved animals and was a vet tech.
Here she is.
Okay.
And your name?
My name is Sharon Melendez. I live in Sandwich. I'm a vet tech. I've worked with dogs, and I've worked with cows. I have extensive experience with animals. I worked for Cape Cod Dog Center from roughly March of 2019 till I gave my notice, April 2021. I gave, I was with Kaylee at the old place in Jan Sebastian Road, and everything was fine there. I left because, and this is the truth, there was 12 kennels there. She was telling clients their dogs were in kennels, nice roomy suites. They were all being shoved in crates. Her worker there, this got to me, he called the dog, one of the dogs, an effing bastard. And I just dropped my broom. I went and talked to the manager, and she said, I can't do anything because the owner won't do anything. I wrote, so I put in my two weeks. I was cut off from my two weeks. I was shoved out the door, whatever. I was so stressed out from just working there. And I come home from work, my mom's talking on the phone, my cousin is a lawyer, and she's like, I don't know if she's going to need a lawyer. Kaylee had called my mother up screaming. She was angry because I'd left a comment on Facebook about Andy calling the dogs bastards. I wanted to talk to her. That's why I brought my mother here. And she said, well, she's working at Daniel Webster. Oh, I don't care about that. I need to talk to her, blah, blah, blah. So they hung up. I came home, and I just laughed. I just laughed. I've tried leaving Google reviews. They get taken down. The only reason I started leaving reviews was because I knew her former manager was there. As long as she was there, the dogs were protected. I found out the former manager wasn't there anymore, and she's brilliant. I knew it was bad. So I felt safe leaving a review. Now that the former manager was gone, I knew it was safe to leave a review that it wouldn't cascade upon the manager. So I left numerous reviews. There's a review on my Facebook, Sharon Melendez. It's pinned right on my Facebook, and I did a sworn affidavit with an animal control officer. It wasn't quite as bad when I was there, but the stories, because the doggy daycare area is a very small community. We all know. We all talk to each other, and I knew things had gotten a lot worse after the former manager had left. And I just hear she's blaming the former manager for everything. No, you're the owner. This is on you. There were lies, lying to clients. I had to leave. I couldn't live with it. I went and washed dishes, and I liked it, you know, because at least it was honest, and I wasn't lying to the clients, you know, anymore and telling, oh, yeah, your dog had a great time. And I would be like, just, it was horrible. It was horrible. I don't lie. So anyways, thank you.
Okay, we're going on to the next subject, communications and correspondence and new business. If you're going to get up and leave, please leave quietly because we have other business. Thank you. Discussion and approval of the order of taking for Watson Drive. Wayne, is this, this is just the start of, this is the one we did at town meeting? Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion, approval of order of taking for Watson Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
And I'm a yes. Okay. Discussion and acceptance of the following resignation. Affordable Housing Committee, term expires June 30, 2025. Gary Schuman, Member-at-Large. Do I have a motion to accept this resignation?
Motion to accept with regrets.
I'll second.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
And I'm a yes.
And could we send a letter, please? Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, term expires June 30, 2025. A motion? Thank you. Chris?
Need a second on that?
Yeah, Rwanda.
Is she?
Yeah, it's on the...
That's a resignation as well, right?
It's a resignation, yes. And we need...
So motion to...
Accept.
Accept.
Motion to accept the resignation of Rollo Kent.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes with a letter of regret. Okay. Interview, discussion, and possible appointment of the following. Conservation Commission, term expires June 30, 2025. Neil Lobson. How are you tonight?
Good. How you doing?
Good, thank you. So we have, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Dean Larson, live on 7 Buccaneer Way. Been a summer kid here since I was born. My parents purchased 72 Captain's Row in 1956, but built their house in 57, right on the water. So I've seen, since I was born, the degradation of Pompanesset Bay. And as I wrote in my letter to you folks, you know, roam my skiff, the bay was full of life, full of eel grass, and so I've seen that firsthand kind of go by the wayside. So something that's near and dear to me. I've lived here full-time since 98. My wife was with the Recreation Department for over 10 years and recently passed. The town's been very, very good to me and my family and Lisa, and I'm just looking for a way to give back to the community.
That's nice. Thank you. And we have his evaluation. Does anybody have any questions for Neil?
I don't, but I was looking for the...
The ratings?
Yeah.
It's right there.
They're in the back.
It's in the back.
Isn't it?
It's at the beginning.
The beginning?
Yes.
Oh, all right, and then went to, okay. Yeah, I missed it.
David? Any questions for Neil?
I have no questions.
Not at this time.
Okay, and you're willing to take the courses that they've asked?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Tom, any questions for Neil?
I don't. I appreciate your interest.
Yes, and we appreciate you stepping up.
Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to approve Neil Larson?
So move.
Second.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate you.
Okay, our next one is Sienna Pitt.
Actually, it's Shawna.
Shawna, I'm sorry.
It's a good icebreaker, though.
Yeah, it is. Tell us a little bit.
So I'm going to kind of sound a little bit like Neil.
Okay.
So my parents bought over off of Red Brook Road in 87, so I've been coming to Mashpee from there. My grandmother had a place off of Maravista and the Falmouth area, so this part of the Cape has always been near and dear to me. My husband Steven and I bought a cottage in Pompanesset in 2002 and brought our children here. So we love the spit, and the spit is my happy place on earth. And then when we retired, we decided that Mashpee was going to be our home. And we've always loved Mashpee. We've loved the ocean. I have, as I've gotten involved in attending town meetings, I know that the town is very committed to thinking about water quality, the health of the bays. I'm also very passionate about water because I think that's what's going to be a big dividing, big issue for us going forward is clean water. I too have seen Pompanesset Bay start to die, but I've seen also the work that's been done on Pompanesset's spit do really good things, like bring back the birds and oyster catchers and the eider ducks, and I saw things this year that I never thought I'd, you know, have never seen on the Cape before. Also retired, I too am looking not to be a checkbook philanthropist anymore, but put some sweat equity in. So I think the Conservation Committee hits some of my sweet spot, and I think my professional background would make me a very logical and fast contributing member to the team.
Good. Thank you for your commitment. Any questions?
It's always good to have talent comes onto the board.
Exactly, exactly. David?
No questions at this time.
Okay. No questions. I appreciate the interest.
Do I have a motion?
And I have a motion to approve CONCOM Shawna Pitt.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for volunteering.
Okay, our next one is letter of interest for the Community Garden Advisory Committee. Jan Towne.
Hi. How are you? Good, thank you.
Tell us a little bit about you, yourself.
I've been at the community garden since 2014, and then it was closed for a few years. And I was fortunate to get a plot in the new garden, one of the big plots. I like to garden, and I like to grow the vegetables for my family, and if I can give back to the committee and the other gardeners, then I'm happy to do so.
And we thank you for that. Do I have any questions from the board members?
I do not.
No?
Thank you for your interest.
What are you going to try to grow?
I beg your pardon?
What are you going to try to grow?
What are you trying to grow? Oh, right now, I've got a winter cover crop in there, but with the drought and the faucet's being turned off, I think it's kind of dead.
So you're going to restart?
So be a fresh start in this, for your time.
Well, we thank you for stepping up. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Community Garden Advisory Committee, Jan Towne.
I'll second that motion.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck with that.
Okay, our next is Affordable Housing Committee. Paula Peters. Paula here tonight?
I don't see her.
I don't either. Okay, we'll put Paula off. How about Doreen Lawrence? Come on down. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Okay. Because of the affordable housing has not had a quorum, we are your people. Okay, so at the end of our...
Do you want to just basically have a...
Start with the questions, exactly. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay. My name's Doreen Lawrence. I live on Horseshoe Benway in Mashpee. My husband and I, we've been there for about 20 years in Mashpee, maybe almost 20 years in Falmouth. We lived there. I was Falmouth's first affirmative action fair housing officer back in 1989, 1990. It was a little while ago. And so I have a lot of fair housing experience.
This is good.
Currently, I'm a lecturer at Suffolk University, and I work at Cape Cod Community College. I'm an adjunct professor there. I worked on committee with Rick Presby when he was at Housing Assistance Corporation, and we met with the commander on Otis Air Force Base to see if we can get some of those buildings converted to affordable housing. That was about 30 years ago, and they politely said, no, thank you, but, you know, we thought it was worth a try. And I worked for one of the shelters for Housing Assistance Corporation also, and we helped the homeless moms get housing. And I was the executive director at Independence House, and we had several transitional apartments across from Cape Cod Hospital. And so we worked with, you know, getting the battered women who we were helping out into housing. So...
So this is your field. I think you'd be a good asset.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, questions, David?
Very impressive resume.
Very.
First thing that comes to mind, though, is you got a lot to present.
A lot of what?
Your positions are all to present. It's rare that I find somebody who's got more going on than, I'm looking at it, I'm confused by it, and just wonder if you're going to have time to make meetings and things. I commend you for stepping up. I'm not trying to discourage you in any way.
No, he's being funny.
At all. Just, yeah.
Because that is impressive.
Very impressive resume. We'd be very fortunate to have you on board.
I think we would be, too. John?
Yeah, I mean, it's funny, because it's actually one of the questions.
Yeah, I know.
Holy cow. You took the easy one, David. So again, it's, you know, you read your resume, and you just read your accomplishments, and you know what? I think would be very lucky and happy to have you join the committee. So I don't, just by glancing at you can, it's not much I could...
And just what you have told us.
So I don't have any questions.
Neither do I. I make a motion. And I'd be very happy to have you on board. I think you're a great asset.
Okay, I need, I would love to have someone make a motion to...
You made a motion.
Oh, we did?
I did.
I'm sorry.
So I'll second.
Second, okay. David?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes.
Tom?
Yes.
You're on. Thank you so much.
Father.
Okay, thank you.
It's too bad, because two other candidates, because there's not even, if there was, if there was a preliminary...
Right.
It would be easy to just, you know, appoint Paula, especially because...
Could I make a suggestion to the board?
Why don't we just approve them?
We've got the vacancies.
We do.
I would just respectfully request that the board, you've got the paperwork.
We've got all of it.
I respectfully request that you approve both.
I think...
Motion to approve both candidates.
Just one at a time, just be official?
Yes, thank you. Oh, you're in. We're not going to let you walk the door.
Oh, yeah, you're in. I'd agree with that, because it's...
I think that's good.
Especially with that long meeting we had.
Yep.
Who knows if they were here and left. So, I'd like to motion to approve Affordable Housing Committee Paula Peters to Member at Large.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Paula, you're in. Okay.
And the next one is Motion to Approve Affordable Housing Committee Member Denise...
Geoffrey.
Geoffrey, Member at Large.
Sheff.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Quorum.
Yes, they'll have a quorum now.
Just so you know, Madam Chair, the, there is one more candidate and one more opening for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, yeah. I knew there was another one coming in.
All right, that will fill them up.
Thank you. That will be good. We can get that committee going. Okay, number 13.
We saved the best for last.
We did. Discussion of Appointment of Mashpee Representative to the Environmental Management Commission Community Advisory Council.
You sure there wasn't something else to talk about before that?
Okay. And who do we have for candidates?
Long time no see.
Yeah.
This is our chance now.
You can't beat someone with no one. I'm your choice. So, what do you want to know?
Well, what do you want to do?
So, I just stood at the last joint leadership briefing that the town's representative to the Citizens Advisory Commission, to the Environmental Management Commission, had resigned. You had an opening. I expressed my interest. As you know, I pay a lot of attention to what goes on over there.
Yes, you do.
I'm going to be doing it anyway, and this would give me an opportunity to be a conduit back to the town. And so, I would appreciate your consideration to be the town's delegate for that.
I would agree that you actually are already doing the job, so now it's just official.
Yeah, and this way I'll be a conduit. I can give you, keep you informed.
Motion to appoint Andrew to the Environmental Management Commission Community Advisory Council?
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now, do a good job.
Good night.
Good luck.
Two.
You just hate to leave, don't you? I said, "You hate to leave. You're going to just stay in here."
Okay, public comment.
Colton Atkinson.
Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you guys? Colton Atkinson, 112 Algonquin. So, yesterday was the Global Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims. This holds special significance to me this year, because this past April, I was actually sent to the hospital after being struck from behind by a driver, who did not see me until the last moment, because the driver in the vehicle in front of them passed within four feet and blocked their view until they were out the other side, until I was out the other side of them. So, I count myself lucky to be here today, but I'm not here to tell you about me. I'm here to use my three minutes to give you guys an opportunity to reflect on the lives that we've lost in Mashpee this year. So, I'm here to remind you about Joseph Queady, Nolan Barr, Alexander Sincata, and Dorothy Illet, four lives that were tragically cut short. I ask all of you to take this time to think about the lives that we've lost, and what you, as members of the Select Board and the residents here tonight, can do to prevent it, both as individuals, as well as the extent that the town should go to, to commit resources towards this issue. These are preventable accidents, and we just need to take action towards it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, old business, additional talk. Lasan Reports. John, David?
None.
Okay, I do have a couple. Thanksgiving dinners will be delivered from the Chamber if you are inbound or not able to get, to do dinner. We will deliver dinner from the Mashpee Chamber. You need to call them at 477-0792 by the 23rd, or go on mashpeechamber.com, and you can find out some more information. We will deliver the dinners the day before Thanksgiving, and they're made through Roach Brothers. We're also doing, through the Mashpee Recreation, Fill the Van. Pickup is Thursday morning. We will start here at Town Hall and go to the Kids Club, the Senior Center, the Police Station, the Fire Station, and the Library, and the schools. They do a great job, and we try to fill that van with paper towels, toiletries, whatever we can, to be brought to Christ the King Food Bank. Anybody else have anything? Tom? No? Water Quality Updates.
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Town Manager Updates?
We should be scheduling the budget review shortly. You will get a schedule on that for the operating budgets, as well as for the Capital Improvement Program review. I also just wanted to mention that we're going to be shortly putting out the schedule for 2025, and I know there's been some discussion relative to changing the time on the Select Board meetings, because at the last meeting, I believe it was, when it was scheduled at 5:00, it was, I guess, better timing than what we're looking at tonight. The only question was whether or not that conflicted with any of the board members, and assuming it doesn't, then we may change it over to 5:00 o'clock for the starting times on most meetings.
I know the EOC tries to do 4:30 to 6:00, just because a lot of the Mondays seem like the better day for most of the group. And so, they try to meet, and they have to stagger around the Select Board and Charter Review. So, that committee, it may affect them a bit.
Of course, Charter Review will only hopefully be going on just a little while longer, but that won't be happening again for another 10 years, presumably.
Well, we can work it out.
Just tossing it out there, because I know there was a discussion.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, given the hour.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi. Thank you.